Welcome to Spokane City Council Study Session for November 2nd. And we have a full agenda. Going to start out with GFC update by Marlene Vice Katherine Miller. That's 45 minutes of scrap up scraps update Garrett Jones 10 minutes and Regional Homeless Authority Discussion for 15 minutes. And Councilmember Bingle, are you leading that discussion?
The Regional Homeless?
Yeah. Okay, great. So, Marlene Katherine, welcome. Do you want us to ask questions as you go or wait till the end? How do you want to do this?
Your call. We can go ahead and get started and see where the questions go.
Okay, let's do that. If you have questions, let's ask them as we go because this is going to be fairly intense, I have a feeling. So, thank you.
Okay, we'll go with this. So, wanted to start off with the feedback. And what I have here is just the written feedback prior to the hearing. We've also included in your packet for Monday, all of the comments that came in written during the hearing of Plan Commission, as well as I implore you to also watch, and I'm sure Spencer can get you any verbal comments that came in during the hearing. But what I wanted to clarify was, we did bring together, as we've mentioned, the Mayor Review Committee. That actually had 15 members plus two council members, so 17 total, 15 stakeholder members. And we asked them all to submit comments prior to us going into the Plan Commission workshops and ultimately the hearing. And I wanted to highlight in bold those members that were on that Mayor Review Committee. And the committee was never intended to find full consensus. There was too many diverse views on that committee. So, we were never trying to come forward with a complete answer. We wanted just to share out what their responses were. And expectantly, depending on their viewpoint, on their interests, they had different opinions, obviously. Now, that doesn't mean that several had the same opinion, just wanted to infer that there was never an intent to come to consensus, nor were there. A great example in terms of the zones, you've got obviously different different opinions on zones and across the board, where, as I mentioned, we had 10 other stakeholders, while they didn't choose to submit, we are not going to guess that they were acquiescing to any of this in terms of whether they agreed or disagreed at any one point. That's why we've implored them overall to please come in, get your written comments in, so they could represent their their thoughts on the topic. The dual asterisks on the downtown partnership, while they said they wanted to, what they actually said was, if you go to one, they still want another zone for the downtown. So, effectively, they still want two. If you don't go with the, you know, the two that we've talked about, they still want a zone around the downtown. So, technically, you kind of get back to two in that regard. It just shrinks down to just the the area around the downtown. Obviously, the Northeast PDA also interested in that two zone versus one. But again, don't want to represent or misrepresent any of those groups. They all had their opinions. Some of them were in line, some of them were not, is the point we're trying to make in that regard. Any questions on in general feedback? Like I said, in your packet, you've got more. Spencer should be getting you anything that was said during the actual hearing. On the Plan Commission recommendations, which Spencer's going to go through, I also want to make a point, what city staff put forward to try to give council kind of an apples-to-apples understanding is, we put forward what council approved in terms of, we have an existing SMC now from the ordinance that passed in March. This is different than what happened in the impact fee, for example. Council did not have any opinions already set. So, we wanted to at least give council kind of a reflection of what you said. Now, we did include a couple of topics that we can't not address, i.e. the amendments at a base level. We have new numbers on the sewer, and numbers that Marlene has updated you guys in the past in previous PIES meetings. Anyhow, so we did have some interest around that I would put a word of consensus on the group around wanting phase in and wanting 5/8 meter. So, we did put those in as amendments, too. So, beyond what council already approved, which sitting on the SMCs today, we did add those other ones in there because we did see a majority of the folks wanted to talk about that as well. Anyhow, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Spencer to go over the results of Plan Commission hearing.
So, we had, is a lot of involvement from Plan Commission during the workshop process and then in the hearing, a lot of deliberation about the the right way to proceed here. The recommendation from Plan Commission that ultimately came out is listed here on the screen. So, for those at home, I'll go ahead and read those off. So, Plan Commission approved one zone for water, or recommended one zone for water. They recommended that the calculation of interest be excluded. They recommended that the city transition to an ERU basis for the water portion. But based on the conversations with staff, they agreed that the MCE would be an easier measure to implement on the sewer side.
We need to, the acronyms are great.
Oh, yes, thank you. ERU means Equivalent Residential Unit. Essentially, you you make an assumption about what a typical residential unit is, and then you apply the calculation, or a calculation across the system based on that assumption. The meter capacity equivalent is essentially just the size of your meter. So, in on the ERU side, you would be paying for, based on the number of equivalent residential units that you're serving in your development, regardless of the size.
Usage, right? Usage?
Yeah, it's tied, it's tied to the, at the end of the day, it's kind of tied to the fixture count and the expected usage. But that's one of the differences, is that the meter capacity equivalent is actually a physical limitation on the amount of water you can use, whereas the equivalent residential unit, the ERU, is basically an assumption about how much water you're going to use. Plan Commission also supported the two-year phase-in, the 5/8 inch meters, and they also supported the clarifications that Katherine just talked about. One thing I want to mention, and we have the findings and conclusions written up, as soon as the Plan Commission President has signed those, we'll make sure that's distributed so council can see it. There was one dissenting opinion on Plan Commission, and we will also share that. Plan Commission rules do allow for a dissenting opinion to be written. And so, that opinion revolves around the two zones. One of the Plan Commission members supported the two-zone concept, and so his dissent addresses that.
So, did Plan Commission then oppose all exemptions and waivers and things like that? Because I don't see anything on there about that.
They, that was not on here. I'm sorry, that didn't make it on. Plan Commission is supportive of an exemption of 100% of the costs, or I should say, an offset of 100% of the costs for affordable housing. We were clear with them during the discussions that ultimately, some of this is wrapped up in budget conversations and where that money can come from. They understand the need to come up with money to backfill. But they wanted to signal to council their strong support for reducing the costs for building for affordable housing.
And so, how does this affect PDAs?
Oh, PDAs? That was actually another point that Plan Commission signaled support for. They they also wanted council, and this is written up in the findings, so you'll see it, they wanted council to find a way to also provide incentives in the PDAs for, you know, incentives for connecting to the systems. They didn't, we didn't get into too much detail about what that would look like, but they they took a vote and and wanted to signal their support for incentives in the PDAs.
So, other than $1,590, do we know where those dollars would come from at the point in time that we would be voting to adopt this?
No, we, and those are conversations that I think are still up in the air as far as what the, where that funding can come from.
And so, I had a conversation with Marlene and Katherine. But my most recent conversation with Marlene, I believe, or I could be making this up, that you and Steve McDonald were going to put your heads together and think about ways that we could layer incentives for affordable housing?
There have been conversations, yeah.
Okay, good.
I think the the open question, we have a pretty good idea of what those incentives could look like.
Okay.
Those will change because we were working off of the adopted version with two zones. And depending on where council goes as far as two zones or one zone, a one-zone decision would probably change the, a little bit of the structure of the incentives. I think the bigger question is about where that funding can come from. And again, $1,590 is one funding source that has been discussed, but there are lots of other funding sources available. And in the end, at least I I'm not aware of any decisions that have been made about the specifics of that funding.
And so, we're going to be voting on this November 27th. Is it possible for the two of you to come up with some, and along with Marlene, to come up with some kind of plan so that we could consider that?
So, what we, we're going to get to this, Katherine has a slide on this, but we're going to actually remove the incentives and put them in a public rule. So, the idea would be that we would, right now, the incentives that you approved in March, which was a full waiver, if you will, for affordable housing stays in place until the 5th of March. So, any changes we make here don't go into effect until the 5th of March, right? So, so the current 66%, whatever, that stays in place through the, basically, the next three or four months. So, we wanted to come back and create a public rule around incentives so that you could have that debate. Once we know what the GFC is in place, we know that you still want incentives for affordable housing. What what shape those take, we can come back and bring that as the the next piece of that. Because it really doesn't impact what we approve for the base GFCs, it really affects how we implement around those other components.
I think Jonathan had his first.
And just for clarification, when we say affordable housing, the waivers that we approved were for permanently affordable housing, not necessarily just affordable housing.
Right. So, we use the language that came from the planning department. So, it was, they were waivers for projects that also qualified for MFTE and for local or state and federal specific affordable housing tax credits, is what was in, what was in the the ordinance.
That's right.
So, those things can be looked at. And I think that's what Economic Development has been looking at, which is, how do we not just incentivize truly very low affordable housing, but maybe some of the workforce housing? What are the ways that we can sort of structure that to get you more of a suite of things that can happen in the in the market?
Go ahead.
I'll just add, I think, on the question of the public rule versus writing things directly into the ordinance, I think the reason we favor the public rule, at least on the Economic Development side, is that, as an example, the definition of affordable housing that's currently in the ordinance includes MFTE and a number of other programs. And given the limitations on the budget for backfilling, it may be desirable to limit that to, you know, capital A affordable housing with federal or state funding, just as an example. When you write that directly into an ordinance, it becomes a lot harder to adjust as times change or needs change, or as funding opportunities change. Whereas, writing it into a public rule can give us a little bit of flexibility in the future to make changes as the needs of the program change or as new funding sources become available.
Those are all approved.
But yes, the public rule would still be approved by council. It's still a, you know, would be the guiding direction of the program.
Yep.
But it would be adopted concurrently at the same time as this, right?
The public rule does not have to be adopted. As Marlene mentioned, this ordinance, whatever does end up getting adopted, would not actually take effect until March.
So, you could do it later.
So, it it would be possible to adopt the ordinance that's proposed and then work on the public public rule portion, the actual incentive portion, over time in preparation for the March implementation of the rate updates.
Well, so, but all of us up here have been kind of through these discussions and, but you're proposing rule changes after half of us have left, and that doesn't make a lot of sense.
Not necessarily. I mean, I don't, there's no reason we couldn't adopt the public rule at the same time.
I just want to make sure that-
I'm just pointing out, there's not, there's not a rush to do it because those rates don't actually take effect.
I just want to make sure that we're clear right up front. And so, if there's, if we need to pay for this, that we know exactly how we're paying for it when we pass it on the 27th, and that any rules and regulations regarding incentives are clear when we do that. Because if there's going to be a massive fee hike, people need to know exactly what they're getting for that.
Yep, understood. I think that's good direction.
Quick question, Spencer. You mentioned the dissenting voice, and I think I remember this from the hearing. Can you share the gist of what the dissent was around, I think, zoning?
I haven't looked at it for a few days, so I I'd prefer to let the dissent speak for itself. There was some concerns about just the adding a higher cost for development in areas that that have been traditionally disinvested or have suffered from, you know, the impacts of, for example, redlining. And so, I think the dissent includes some maps that show the areas that have suffered from those impacts and how they actually align pretty closely with the lower zone under the two-zone scheme. And so, those development costs would actually be cheaper in those areas and perhaps spur investment in areas that haven't seen a lot of investment. I think that's sort of the gist of the argument. But again, there's, I can let the dissent speak for itself, and we'll distribute that for you to review.
Thank you.
So, I wanted to just remind council kind of where we're at and where the conversation was going. So, this is what would be in the SMCs today in terms of the upper zone and the lower zone, the 10,000 at the upper zone and the 2,800 at the lower. And I just wanted to walk through the different current, or points here. Anyhow, so without interest, the upper zone drops by about $772 to the 9,635. And that arrow is just showing you where the lower zone was sitting between, basically, Coeur d'Alene and Whitworth, drops down to, drops down about $542, down to what you see there when you take out just interest, leaving the two zones in place. Obviously, when you have a citywide, the arrows are just showing you where where the numbers go, if you will. Obviously, the low zone goes up, the upper zone goes down, leaving you at that 4881. Citywide without interest, you drop another $595 to get to the 4285, again, without interest. And all along, the low, the low bar there at the bottom has always been at the bottom, but that's the historic numbers, of course, that we started with before March. Same tables you've seen before. Again, just want to give you in different forms to be able to see it. We'll, we'll shoot this presentation to you till later. And then, of course, sewer only had one zone to begin with, and this is the revised number. This is what we are coming forward with an amendment. Again, this was based off of finalizing all of the work around NLT at that 6863 for the three-quarter meter. So, we do have all the new values to go in at a minimum. And of course, without interest, it's dropping down to the 5,000. This jump is $1,700 difference. This is a significant jump over the water. And again, to remind council, when we talk about it, interest, it's based off of the year that facility was built. And obviously, NLT was built very recently, obviously, a very large project cost, and that's why you're seeing that significant difference over what you saw for the water And again, the table showing the same information. MCE versus ERU, that same conversation came up to, the breakdowns wise, we did have a 1.1% difference between ERUs and MCEs for water. And again, that differential is is different with wastewater or sewer because we don't have all of the data involved that we need, again, about that groundwater that I mentioned at PIES last time. Again, this is what the single zone would look like between the two, again, the same percentage difference. The 5/8 meter, again, that conversation was to allow another opportunity for a lower-cost option. The citywide there is over on the right-hand most side. So, this is merely a starting point, but what was submitted for your consideration was to, again, place those incentives, scraping them all out of the SMCs, putting them into the public rule that we just discussed, also looking to remove the two-zone to one-zone. The reason why we're looking at that is because whether you do the one-zone or the two-zone, the math is the same in the end to to bring in the revenues needed to run the system. So, whether you go with the two-zone or the one-zone, the math in the background generates the same amount of money, again, that we need to put the facilities in place. Again, I mentioned in the updating the sewer rates, like we just talked about, the clarifying the master meters. There was just some question about existing master meters and on PUDs that if there were some existing homes remaining, there was some maybe concern or or questions about, well, I've already got a master meter, do I have to pay now? If, you know, the MCEs are in place, it's all focused around that meter price. So, we just want to clarify language in there that, yes, if you have an existing meter out there today in a master meter form that you're adding another home to, you would still be paying a GFC charge for that.
Can you give us an example of a master meter? So, you you started down that path.
Sure.
So, it's, you've got a meter.
Yep. So, a master meter in a PUD, a planned unit development.
Yeah.
That's usually when they go in, and I'm just going to factically say 100 homes, they buy, they they put in that master meter, and over time, you know, in fives and 10s start building homes. Well, in March of this year, we put in place MCEs, which are focused on the meter. And so, we wanted to make sure people understood, while you have a master meter out there today prior to March, you are still building homes and coming in and paying a GFC. So, in the past, GFCs were paid on a lot-by-lot basis within a PUD.
Okay. But are the master meter, then, do, does each home have a separate meter?
No, a master meter for a PUD has one master large meter that feeds all of the homes within that PUD. And so, before we changed, before March, you know, when council put in place MCEs, looking at the master, looking, MCEs are the meter, right? Meter equivalency is what we're talking about. So, the physical meter was now the focus. And so, existing meters out there prior to March still need to pay on a per lot-per-house basis. So, we just wanted to make sure that the language was very clear on that.
And then, you can tell them that going forward, they can have a choice.
Oh, sure, of course. The choice, you know, going forward is, if you want to pay your GFC upfront, it's still a choice, but we also wanted to make it clear that they want to, if they still want to pay over time, and when those houses come in, they still could. So, again, keeping as much flexibility as possible.
That makes sense.
And the last clarification is, again, on the index, the ENR index, making sure it's very clear that it's a year-to-year basis we're looking at, and we wanted to look at October to October. So, every January, we will have a new rate in place based on the previous October to October rates.
And that ENR index is the Engineering News Record Index.
Correct.
Which calculates the costs of building materials versus just inflation in general, right? Which calculates eggs and everything like that.
Exactly. Very focused on the market of construction. Exactly. And then, again, the 5/8 meter to be included. So, that really is all we had today to talk about, other than to answer questions that you have. I do have FCS online as well, so if we get into any of the deep weeds, we can bring bring them in.
So, yes, and I'm sorry Karen's not here. She had a lot of questions. I think there was some confusion about that we were going to start implementing this in November because we're voting on it in November, which is not the case.
That is not the case. All the changes would be in place March 5th, 2024. Everything else that's in the document stays till March 4th.
Okay. So, would you all, meaning you and Katherine, you be available to Councilmember Stratton at some point, maybe next week, to answer her questions?
Yep.
Anybody, go ahead.
I don't have questions, but I have a number of comments. So, first off, again, I've heard from a number of people who are involved in this.
Councilmember Wilkerson. HR, HR.
HR. So, I've heard from a number of people who are involved in this process, that it was one of the better processes they've been through as we were, when we went, like, issue by issue and actually sort of discussed and had, you know, sometimes debate over the issues. And I just want to commend you guys and your team for what you did, bringing people together. I've heard from a number of people that it was a really well-done process, so again, kudos on that. On, can we go back to the recommendations or council considerations? So, I think in this, as we've gone through everything, I think the one-zone makes sense. I think for the city to implement ERUs for water, but MCEs for sewer is going to be pretty administratively burdensome. So, I think it makes sense that we would do MCEs on both until such time as I know that we're doing, or can we do a study to get ERUs done for sewer? That way, we can actually have a a better, more specific conversation on that, on that issue.
Right. The point of the ERUs is, it's a probably, it's an extensive study, so we're looking at least a two-year assessment. And, you know, with MCE, or excuse me, with GFCs, we're already committing to looking at these and updating them every three to five years.
Right.
So, quite frankly, it falls into that three-to-five-year window. So, I think the best process is to let it, let it run and then go forward, and then we can see what that study results in.
And Councilmember Bingle, you're making an assumption, though, that it is burdensome. You should probably ask the question, is it burdensome to have two different?
I apologize. I I had this conversation, and so I asked this question, but I can ask it here. Would it be administratively burdensome to do ERUs for one and MCEs for another?
We believe so, correct.
Okay. So, I think that the one-zone makes sense. I think MCEs for now makes sense until at least we can understand what's going on there. I think not charging the interest makes a lot of sense as well when we're looking at the costs. We are still doing a significant increase for the infrastructure that's going to be put in, the the costs for developers as they're putting in. I mean, it's still 400% increase on a lot of these things, which is a massive increase. I also think that it would make sense for us as we're moving forward, because it is such an increase. I think it would make sense for us to continue a phase-in, which we sort of did this year, this was sort of year one in the phase-in, to have another couple of years on that, to get us to the point that that we need to be, to where it's not such a shock to the system, trying to create as fertile a ground as possible for people to want to invest and and create in the city of Spokane. I think the 5/8 meter makes a ton of sense for a lot of smaller projects, smaller homes, smaller developments, ADUs, all kinds of things. smaller developments, ADUs, all kinds of things. I think it's going to make a lot of sense there. On the PDAs, I guess I, I thought, I thought we pulled the PDAs out, that they were no longer having their things, their charges waived. Is that inaccurate?
The PDAs are still a topic that need to be addressed.
Okay.
And they are, the fact that the inter-local agreements within all the PDAs have the language in there, that they are choosing to waive the GFC for the developer. So the decision in front of us is if the developer isn't paying, then who needs to pay?
Right.
And that certainly could be a menagerie of solutions. One of them could be the PDA, since they are receiving all of our tax dollars for that area, is informed that while they choose not to have the developer pay, that they still need to be on notice to pay. You certainly could have a general fund solution there. You could certainly have other solutions potentially there as well.
I'm pretty interested in this idea because I definitely want to incentivize the PDA. Large portion of my district has a PDA, and I want to make sure that development is happening there. But I, one of the things I'm concerned with is that if we just continue to waive all the fees, what ends up happening is we don't have the money to build the infrastructure there. So incentives, I think, are great. Finding a funding source for that, as we were talking about a lot of things, I'm interested in that discussion because I think it does need to be paid for. Because, again, if it's not being paid there, obviously, then our ratepayers are going to be the ones who are subsidizing that. So finding that is going to be great. My last question, I think, sorry, Anne, my last question would be if we could complete the fixture table for MCEs so that developers can see how we're calculating.
And that makes complete sense. That was our intent. We've been working on it in the background, but have a completed table that'll be easy to roll out for people to use.
Go ahead, and then council.
Yeah, a couple of things real quick. So I have strong concerns over not waiving the fees in the PDAs because I feel like we already lack a lot of incentives and ways to motivate growth, particularly in the NEPDA. We don't have a lot of the same amenities that the West Plains PDA has, nor the U District. And so I think we're just going to make it harder to recruit growth in the PDA if we don't waive the fees. Second, the two-year phase-in, to me, is just, it should be five. Two years is just way too short. We've got to gently rule this out because, I mean, we're talking 400% massive increase in fees. That is startling. So that's a concern. My other, my question, though, is I have gotten in the last two days a call and an email from two different folks involved in this tangentially, saying that there is a plan to overturn the Plan Commission's recommendations. I haven't heard that. Nobody's brought that up today, but I'm just trying to understand where they've gotten that. Has there been some open discussion about that somewhere? I've heard zero from here, so I'm just wondering if there's been other conversations.
You have an answer?
So I think what it is, if we look at Planning Commission's recommendations, you know, they recommended one zone, which we're likely moving forward with. They recommended ERUs for water, but MCEs for sewer. I think it makes more sense to do MCEs for both of them right now for just the ease of administration while we're doing this ERU study for sewers. And then again, we're going to be updating this in three to five years. We can, you know, look at this again. So that would be one where if we went with straight MCEs and not ERUs and MCEs, then we're not going with Planning Commission's recommendations. And then if we didn't do the phase-in, that would also be an area where we're not, or, and if we included interest, then those would be the ways that we were not listening to Planning Commission.
Okay. So it's just those little?
Because the ordinance that's filed right now includes interest, has one zone, straight MCEs, and does not have a phase-in. So that's the current ordinance that's been filed. But that's a working document currently.
And I would remind everybody that the Plan Commission is an advisory body. We are the ultimate decision-makers. They do their best, but they also have interests, specific interests, in how they decide things as well. So they're members of different communities and builders, home builders, architects. So they have a vested interest too in how they're going to vote and recommend. Councilmember Wilkerson?
I was just going to comment, we don't agree very often, but I'm concerned, I want fee waivers, I want development, but somebody will have to pay at some point. And it would be not the developers, but it'll be all the citizens of the city that are paying. Where would that come from? And then who is carrying the interest costs on this development? Where is that falling into play? Are we, is it our own SIP loans that we're just charging ourselves? So where's the interest coming into this?
Well, let's let Catherine and Marlene.
Just to be clear, when you refer to interest, you're referring to my conversation about interest?
Yes.
You know, I'm going to actually ask Brooke from FCS to go ahead and give you just an understanding again of what the interest is and why it's available for us in terms of a RCW.
Thank you. Can you all hear me okay?
Can you speak up just a bit?
Sure. Can you hear me better now?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Okay. So yeah, interest is allowed in the charge based on the RCW that guides development of connection charges. It really is meant to represent a carrying cost, reflecting the fact that the city invested in infrastructure instead of maybe taking that money and investing in an interest-bearing account. We also do have to remember that based on the RCW for these charges, we can only use original costs of our assets. So if a tank went in in $1965, that's all we can charge for it with the addition of this interest component. So it really is meant to represent that carrying cost. And I guess to answer your question, if we were to pull that out, any costs that aren't recovered through this charge really shift to the existing ratepayers.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
So for example, the Shadle water tank, what did it cost us to put in? $300,000 or something like that? Today, how much would it cost to put in? 12 million? Yeah. And so we can only charge $300,000. And so the interest is meant to reflect the fact that, like in Idaho, they can charge replacement costs. We can't do that. And so in the state of Washington, we can only charge our original costs, but they give us the ability to charge interest, reflecting the fact that it costs far more than $300,000 to replace that.
I think everybody understands that. I think the point that Councilmember Wilkerson was making is even if it's $300,000, somebody's going to have to pay that. We'd rather it not be the ratepayers. Any other questions for?
I would just say reflecting, again, the fact that GFCs can only be used for increased capacity, not current capacity. So.
Even more reason then.
Yeah.
Anybody else? You'll get other opportunities, I'm assuming. You guys aren't going on vacation anytime soon, so please reach out if you'd like to discuss more. We're happy to. And I will be emailing you the PowerPoint from today.
We should tell them, though, that Marcia's going to present at 3:30 on Monday because I have to be in Olympia.
Both Marlene and I will be gone on Monday, so Marcia will just be introducing for Monday, which is just your advanced agenda.
Not sure we can allow that. Okay. Any other, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question about, I don't think this was something that you all have been talking about, but there's been a lot of the discussion about affordable housing being waived and what's funding source. I don't know if you all had a proposal for that, or if that was still things that have been?
You were just talking.
Yeah, that's what would, I think, in the development of public rule, that's where we would address some of that. And I think what we're hearing from the council is there's a desire to have that come forward at the same time as the ordinance is considered, so that you understand what that, what those incentives would look like. So we will be finalizing that and bringing that forward as well.
Anybody else? Okay, I think we're questioned out. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your time. Scrap's update is Garrett Jones. Did you bring any puppies with you?
I so want to say, who let the dogs out?
Hey, yeah.
I know. Every time Betsy sees me now, she barks at me. All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity. This will be pretty quick, but I just wanted to give you an update of kind of where we're at. We did hold our first advisory committee as a group, and this is a committee that has not met from some time. It was even pre-pandemic. So a lot of the conversation during this meeting was really establishing the roles and responsibilities of this advisory committee. Who is going to be running this committee? What is the makeup of this committee? Right now, we look at county representatives, city of Spokane, city of the valley, and then a smaller jurisdiction. So right now, it's the city of Fairfield that's on there as a representative. And then also, too, really of how to establish agenda items, reviews, meeting notices, durations. So a lot of the technical logistic pieces, but I think that was very helpful to kind of set the stage of who's running it, how are questions being answered, how are agendas being established. So our next meeting will be next Wednesday for our next advisory committee. I did have the opportunity to meet with the county as well, and just to give you some high-level points where I think we can work on together with each agency. As one, is the idea of establishing a consistent ILA with all jurisdictions. It's messy. Some have different language than others. And so the thought is, could we have a consistent ILA? And then if there is any detailed operational pieces for a jurisdiction, then it's an Attachment A or an Exhibit I or whatever it may be, but the ILA is pretty standardized. And also, too, the, one of the pieces is, is really around the role of the advisory committee. We found out that the roles of what it says in IR, IR ILA is a little bit different than the city of the valley. So again, creating that consistency there. And then also, those roles as far as the processes, the community outreach and education piece, and the reviewing of the policies and procedures. Another piece of the ILA is in, towards the end of our agreements, there is some national associations that are referenced as far as policies, guidelines, and standards. Some of those contradict each other within those standards and guidelines. So again, cleaning that up, having a set of eyes look at those guidelines and standards moving forward. And then also creating some ongoing updates to agencies. So creating that communication through that, that organization to come to those jurisdictions with ongoing updates as well. And then two of the biggest pieces, one is creating clear definitions. This is a big piece, whether it's on the behavioral side, medical side, diagnosis side, is creating clear definitions within the ILA. And so again, it's creating that transparency and that consistency. And a lot of times, it's taking the third-hand or the assumptions that we know exactly what the definitions and qualifications are for these certain areas. And then other is establishing policies and procedures that are transparent around the general operations, timing, outreach, and assessments. This is, I think, a crucial piece of, so everyone knows when a particular animal, if there's an intake, there's, here's the processes that go, happen at that point. Here is the timeframes from point A to point B. If there's a secondary assessment, what type of outreach has been performed with other agencies or shelters? So it's all written down. It's all very transparent. And we have a timeline that is established, so you can see in a particular area, again, what that process is for that organization. So there's a lot of work that needs to happen in some of these areas, yes.
So if there is an assessment, and the assessment says that an animal, let's say it's a dog, dangerous dog, or has behavioral problems, is there a process by which the dog can be assessed by more than one person so that we are not, so that we make sure that we're getting a good assessment and not just one person's opinion?
I think these are, these are areas that we would need to look at and potentially include and have discussion around those policies and procedures. I think the agreement that we had to, that it needs to be out front and transparent, I think creating those policies and procedures, that takes away from some of the assumptions of who's making the decision, when that decision is being made, and what other type of outreach tools are being made as well.
Garrett, thank you for sitting in on these and doing your best. I just, a couple things I want to note. One, the day after your first meeting, they did euthanize another dog that had no bite history. So there's that. Second, we obviously had a horrific incident two days ago regarding a dog. And I found out yesterday that scraps refused to respond when that initially took place. I have made a public records request for the dispatch logs related to that call, as well as other calls going back six months, to get a sense of how they are acting or not responding. I heard that this is a, not a one-time thing, and so I want to get to the bottom of that. But I just, I raise this to say, especially in light of what just took place two days ago in my district, we need to make sure that they are following the contract, not just with regards to euthanasia, but with regards to responding to dangerous dogs. And I don't get the sense that they are doing that on a consistent basis. And so I would raise that as a very important issue for your next and ongoing meetings. Because at the end of the day, we want to make sure we are getting the service that we are paying for and that our constituents expect, and it does not feel that way right now.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And really, so to give the next steps, I mean, that was our initial meeting with the county. What the next steps is going to look like is a recap of what we talked about. That'll come in a form of a letter from me back to the county as far as areas that we want to work on, and then create that schedule and timeline around on the next steps. Some of these are going to take a little bit of time when we're talking about the policies and procedures and who reviews them, and how are those going to be included in the ILA. But I do think both the county and the city in our meeting do agree that we're open to look at how we can do better.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
I'll have to say, I'm really disappointed that the things that you said need to happen have not been happening. The structure.
And I think, just to be clear, too, there might be the policies and procedures out there, but I think we need to review them. They need to be out in the open. Again, so there might, again, in any of these areas as far as assessments and the standards, they might be there, but I think a part of it is just that transparency of just, here's what they are. Here's what we're doing in those conversations. So just to be clear, I don't know, again, when we work on the ILA, there could be policies and procedures, but I think reviewing those, standardizing those to make sure that we're referencing the right organizations and agencies and associations that have those national standards, and then, of course, following either, you know, the RCW as well and the state laws that are established.
And also then, how is the funding determined? The city's contribution, is that just a straight-line item that we give them so much every year? Where is the collaboration of how we come up with a number financially that the city of Spokane contributes to this organization for this service? I can't remember ever seeing it. That just could be me. But how is that determined going forward? Is that reviewed on a yearly basis? Will that be in the ILA? How that is calculated going forward? That'd be something that'd be just interesting, well, we need to know for budgeting purposes regardless.
Okay. Perfect. Any other questions?
Anybody else? Garrett, thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
For putting yourself out there and reporting back. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Councilmember Bingle, start us off, please.
All right. So at our last meeting, you know, we were talking governance quite a bit for the regional housing or homeless authority, and we have our next meeting tonight. But the big thing that was discussed, again, was, was the governance and the board structure. And, you know, the original board structure that we proposed was 13 members. Then it became 14 members. Then it became 16. And now currently, it's about 20. And so the board size continues to balloon quite a bit. Of the 20, which might be the current proposal, we'll find out today. I mean, lots of discussions are happening, and so things are moving. But the latest update I have is that there would be eight electeds on this board, two from the city of Spokane, two from the county, two from the valley, and two from small cities. That would be eight. And there's going to be three subgroups to this, okay? You have eight electeds. Then you have your funders group, which is going to be Spokane Tribe, Inovia, a business representative, Empire Health Foundation, Workforce, and the COC. The COC chair would be there. And then your third group is subject matter experts. This is where you're going to have a private and a public housing representative, a physical health and a mental health professional, public safety, and lived experience. Then you would have an executive committee that's going to be handling more of the day-to-day operations. And the executive committee would be five members. So you would have the CEO on this. You would have the board chair on this, and then a subgroup chair that they would choose to represent each subgroup. That would then be on this executive committee. So you would have five. And that is probably the biggest update so far, yes.
Who, so in particular, the Who, so in particular, the non-elected, who is selecting those individuals?
It's a very good question. I don't know the answer to that right now, yep.
Go ahead.
So appreciate my friends at Inovia, Empire Health Foundation, but why just those two funders versus other funders? What led to that?
So what happened was Empire Health Foundation representing a group called Experience Matters, which is, you know, a lot of your service providers, wanting to get the service providers bought in. The offer was made to give a board position to Empire Health Foundation, sort of representing the service providers in that regard. And then Inovia was brought on board as well, as they, again, have access to good capital and could help fund a lot of the programs, sort of a balance of your nonprofit groups that are, that have money that they can bring to the table, so.
But have they committed to funding? Have they ever funded?
No.
So how do we know that they will be funding?
Well, we, I believe, and Nicolette, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but Empire Health Foundation is the one that currently, I believe, is receiving the commerce dollars? Am I wrong on that, or is that? Come on up, help me out here. Help me out here.
But they're pass-through.
Right.
So Empire Health Foundation does have a contract with the Department of Commerce for the road dollars, is that what you're speaking about?
Yes, yeah. And so they have money that is coming specifically to their organization for this purpose.
But what about Inovia?
So Inovia, nobody has committed to funding anything at this point, so.
That's why I'm a little concerned. It sounds like they're getting to come into the club, but they haven't done anything or aren't committing to anything, seems odd.
And to be fair, the workforce hasn't committed anything, Spokane Tribe hasn't committed anything yet, COC hasn't committed anything to this specific group. And so it's not that, you know, we've received firm commitments from everybody. This is the most recent proposal because we believe that they could have dollars, and the expectation would be that if you're on the board that you are bringing dollars, that would be the expectation.
The COC.
For that specific funders group.
But the COC needs to have a seat because they are part of our SMC structure, so they won't be bringing, but to get some of the monies that we do receive, the COC has to be a player. I am too concerned about Inovia, and in some respects, Empire Health Foundation, because those providers could have a voice themselves without having to go through another entity
I agree with you.
To be at the table.
I agree with you, yep.
And so, I'm sorry, Nicolette.
No, no, I also would like caution about calling certain groups funders or not, just because, you know, the jurisdictions themselves are also bringing in dollars that they otherwise would be distributing on their own. And I would worry about, you know, for example, if Inovia, if a bunch of people start donating money to them because they think that they'll be able to influence their vote on the board, then I think you're going to have to have a really complicated, well, you're already going to have to have a really complicated conflict of interest policy. But I do think it begs the question of why that wouldn't be optional for multiple different kinds of philanthropy individuals to be able to, or organizations to be able to apply for that. And then one other piece about calling the COC a funder, it seems a little presumptuous as though they're going to give up their dollars, and they still, because it's federal law, they're still going to have to be the decision-makers on the COC-specific dollars. So I would, I would not like to call them funders just because I'm a little persnickety about that.
Totally. And the thing is that I met with some members from the COC yesterday, and I don't know that the COC currently is interested in this iteration of what's happening as it stands now. And so there's still a lot of things that are, that are being worked out. Like I said, this is the most recent proposal that I received, but again, there's a lot of things here. The attempt that's being made is just trying to get people to decide, we can all work together, and this is how we're going to feel comfortable working together. But the trouble is, is that the board is getting really big, really fast.
Yeah.
And.
So as I'm phasing myself out here on council and on some of the committees, Councilmember Orlick and Orich, I'll get it by the time I'm done here, I'll get your name right, and Councilmember Zappone are taking my spot, I'm concerned that things are moving very, very slowly. And it would be nice if there's some structure around the actual meetings themselves, so every meeting you come out with an outcome. So that here's what we decided at this meeting, then you move to the next thing, then the next thing. I understand, I mean, I've been going to these meetings, I understand the personalities involved. And I'm going to have a meeting with Gavin on Thursday, so suggests that maybe there'd be a little more rigor when it comes to those meetings, that we all need to agree, we have, we have deadlines, and something has to happen by next year, or you all are going to be scrambling for money for track again. And that's not an option. It's just not going to happen. So I'm concerned that we're going through this so slowly, trying to get every single person to agree. And it may be some people just don't agree and need to take a hiatus and come on board when they're ready. Just get the folks that are willing to cooperate and come together, and then the ones that don't then come up later.
And that's a, that's a serious discussion that we're having is, again, we're trying to get something done, we're trying to make it to where everybody believes they can buy into the vision and run with it. That's what we're genuinely trying to do, but in the end, we're not going to be able to get everybody. And so how can we get as many people as possible with as reasonable a policy as possible, as reasonable a structure and governance as possible, and move forward with that? And so I agree with you, you know, I push pretty hard for people to be doing their homework outside of the meetings and come prepared the next time. And so today, again, I would imagine that the board structure, there's going to be pushback on this, and I wouldn't be surprised if the outcome from today's meeting would be 20 is too many, we need to reduce it.
It's going to be different, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead, Councilmember Wilkinson.
So I was at the CHHS meeting last night, and the COC, their monthly meeting, and the COC still is very uneasy, and will be asking Gavin to come back. But I guess I questioned the Spokane Valley, because I thought they hadn't really bought off on this, to be part of this. They went there to wait and see, so why would we, what's the conversation of giving them two seats if they're really not in at the beginning?
Well, I, to be frank, I don't think any one of the jurisdictions is in right now. So we're not in, the county's not in, the valley's not in, small cities are probably the closest of anybody, they're like, please just get something done. But I don't think anybody is really there. And so I understand the conversation about the valley. They have legitimate concerns, and just as we have legitimate concerns and the county does. And so we're working through that, but I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say anybody is ready to sign on the dotted line right now. Some of us might be closer than others, but nobody's ready.
I think perhaps the next step for the council, this council, in next year would be to draft another resolution based on the work that you've done, whoever's been participating, and come up with another resolution that is more of a commitment. Because I think people are looking at us like, well, where's your commitment? You just passed a resolution that says you don't agree with us. So it might be wise for the new people on council and you who are left to come up with a new resolution, more of a commitment to, we need to get this done. It really benefits the city of Spokane the most. The last thing you want to have happen is nothing, and then what do you do?
Yes. And the city of Spokane does need to be the leader on this, in my opinion. We really do. We're currently the leaders in the homelessness response, and we need, we're going to continue to be that way. And there will be things that throughout this process to reach an agreement, the city of Spokane will have to give up some things that maybe we don't want to give up, in the same way that the county and the valley will probably have to make concessions that aren't awesome, that they don't love, but are good for the region in general. And those are things that we're trying to work out right now. And, you know, again, we as a, we as a council, I think we have the ability to be the leaders in this space and say, it's time for us to step up and work together, and we're willing to do this. And so I think that we could, because I know that everybody on this council is committed to this process, and so I think that we could do a good job there.
It's almost urgent at this point, Councilmember Orich.
Has there even been talk of, two questions, a timeline now, given we are under such time constraints? And then also especially, for me, I think one of the biggest challenges I see is hiring your first staff member who's going to have to work miracles. And so how are you going to find that person?
Yes.
In the amount of time we have left?
I, there, timelines are tough for us to nail down, because, yes, they are fluid. I think everybody understands the urgency and the importance, but there is just, there's a lot of trust that has to be built throughout the jurisdictions in this space, and I don't know that we can rush that, I think that's going to take some time. And so I don't know how quickly we can get there, but I think the best thing for us to do is instead of rushing to get an agreement would be for us to get a good agreement. And so I agree that it is urgent, and we need to be going as quickly as possible, but not so fast it becomes detrimental to the process. And so I'm very open to suggestion on that, but.
I would also say that originally, remember, they wanted to borrow staff from CHHS? I don't think that's possible. And their, CHHS is scrambling now, trying to keep up with all that they need to do. I don't think it's realistic for us to be loaning staff. That makes me very nervous, and I think that the entity is going to have to hire their own staff, even if it's a couple of people at first, just to get things going and coordinate with our staff, with city of the valley, with the county, and more of a collaboration rather than we're loaning our staff. That makes me nervous at this point, knowing what I know about our department.
Yeah, I had a question around the two seats per jurisdiction. That was news to me, I had never heard that even being discussed at the meetings I went to, so can you explain?
Yeah, we've, we just, yeah, we discussed that in the past, and it was something that the board structure that I sort of proposed only had one from each jurisdiction, but there were other iterations where there was two from each jurisdiction. And that was mostly, again, a nod to the city of Spokane, which would say, the city council would have a representative and the mayor's office would have a representative. So the two was rather than the city of Spokane, where we would probably run into some tension between, you know, the administration and us, who gets to be the representative on this? The, the, the idea behind it was that we would each be represented, but if, again, in the interest of equal representation versus proportional representation, which we've talked about a number of times, in the interest of equal representation, if the city of Spokane is going to have to, give the county two, give the valley two, give small cities two. So that's where the two per jurisdiction came from.
Yeah, I guess I still just struggle with the idea of equal representation here with all of that, and the small, small cities getting two seats on that, I don't, I just struggle with it.
Yeah. Again, it's a very fair argument, and the question becomes, again, if we're trying to bring this together and people want equal representation on this board, there's a fair argument for the city of Spokane to say, if we're bringing more money than anybody else, we should have more representation. That's a fair and fine argument. I think I fall on the equal representation side of it, but the other argument I think is a totally valid argument as well.
Well, and money isn't the only resource that entities could bring.
Correct.
And so I would.
Services and.
Yes.
Land.
Land, yes.
And the people it impacts are impacting our people the most.
Yes.
And so it's a real struggle for me, probably our staff will be coming from there. So I get the idea of like, you know, we have to give some to bring the small cities and others along, but I feel like they also have to give, that's part of the compromise, they have to give two. And I think we give up a lot already in a board structure, if we only have two seats and everyone else has one, that's already giving up a lot. Very, we're small in a board of 20 or 13 if we only have one or two seats, so.
Don't you think we need to identify for the small cities or the ones that don't have money to give? What are you going to come forward with? What kind of resources can you offer?
Yep.
And then you've got some skin in the game. And the other thing that we have to remind ourselves, the dollars we're probably going to be giving are pass-through dollars, they're not our dollars, they're not general fund dollars, the pass-through dollars to this, but still, they're, we're turning this over to an entity and trusting them to make the right decisions for us.
If we are not bearing the sole burden for track and for those kinds of things, then we are, again, just in turn, giving our pass-through dollars to this. If we're not throwing a bunch of re-dollars, if we're not doing all that, then we're not necessarily doing more than others. Not to say that we're not, because again, a lot of the services are still located in the city of Spokane.
Exactly. But to Councilmember Zappone's point, it's the impact it has on the city of Spokane when you're concentrating services in one spot.
Correct.
That is a tremendous impact.
Yes.
Financially, our quality of life, everything.
Right, I mean, we're talking about impact to our public safety system, that the others aren't going to have to pay and afford, and our residents and our, like, there's a lot of impact here.
Correct.
But I think the whole point, though, is that we are, that the whole point of doing this is to spread out that impact.
Correct.
So that it's not just the city. And so to me, it's whatever, not whatever, but preferably keeping the valley, the county and others at the table, to me, is what's most important, because at the end of the day, if they're not at the table, we don't have a regional system to address it.
But they may not be at the table initially. They may come to the table after they see some progress. So they may need to be coaxed, convinced, cajoled, courted, whatever you want to say. They're not going to necessarily be, and it's interesting to me that the small cities are the most enthusiastic.
They're the most enthusiastic, and it's not close.
They're just, yeah, let's do this.
It's not close, yeah.
And so I'm, that's heartening to me that they are, but then they need to go to that.
You haven't been there for the lectures where the small cities have told us, you know.
I've heard about it.
Remove your heads and, you know, make it, make it work?
Yes.
Those, yeah.
I will just point out, there have been increasing, you know, impacts related to homelessness in the North County, particularly kind of up there, close to Hastings Road area, there's been a lot, a lot of stuff going on. And then also in the valley, in particular, closer to Dishman, we hear and see a lot of that. And so, you know, there is absolutely every reason in the world for them to be, you know, participating.
They haven't, it hasn't dawned yet, so.
So here's, here's where I think the equal representation is going to have to happen. Because if we're wanting to spread out services, what is the incentive for the valley to say, okay, go ahead and put some services here when they're currently all in the city of Spokane? What is the incentive for the county? What is the incentive for anybody? Because currently, it's all in the city of Spokane. And so if we say we continue to be, you know, the top dog, the big dog, we're driving all the decisions, everything like that, what is their incentive to join us when we do need to be spreading out the services?
So I guess this is an operational question, if there's a new entity that decides they want to open a shelter in the valley, right? This entity, whether the valley's on the board or not, can choose to open it in the valley, whether they're on there or not. Is that correct? Or the valley can change their zoning whether they're on there or not.
They can't do that anymore, based on state-led, just like a block.
State law. So, I mean, to the point of land, it's, it gives them a voice to participate in the process, but ultimately, a new authority is going to decide where they believe the best. We won't even get to decide if we want it to be in one neighborhood or another, we wouldn't have a choice either. It's going to be up to that entity.
And I, I'm not entirely sure, process-wise, you know, that there may be some opportunities to slow-roll those types of decisions and things if they're not fully participating. I don't know, but that would be the one, my one thought on that, but.
Yeah. So I, I mean, having a seat at the table and being part of it, I think, is important, but I guess I just get concerned, also, when we talk about how these are pass-through dollars, that means currently we have to decide, is this the right use? We're stewards of those dollars right now, and is that the best use of those dollars for the future?
Totally.
Of an organization that we don't know how it'll operate or what it'll do, or how it'll be composed. While they're not our dollars, we are responsible for them right now.
Correct.
And I don't know if there's been more discussions of a sunset, or how long this would last, if there was a change to, if we decide this is not operating well, how can it dissolve that sort of conversation?
Yeah, so there will be ways that everybody can, can exit if they want. I'm personally not in favor of a sunset for the fact that if we're doing this, let's do it, right? Let's not make it to where after a year you can pull out, because I think that, I really think it's best to not have a plan B for people to get out. I think we need to have it like, we're all committed to this and we're in it together. Again, not to say that there's not a good argument for a sunset, I think it makes the most sense for us to do that. But realistically, even if there were ways to pull out, if this entity were to take on some form of debt or something like that, basically, everybody's in until that is paid off. And so obviously, taking on debt, financial decisions, those will be a high-bar vote that everybody would have to be in on in those cases.
Well, has there been more discussion? I understand your opinion, but has there been more discussion as a group about it?
So we discussed it pretty heavily months ago, and I think we decided.
But not recently.
Not recently, yeah.
So it is all pass-through dollars, but those administrative fees fund CHHS. And so I guess the administration would have to be thinking about how they transition that department, or what they do with that department, because that's what keep those doors open as well.
You are correct.
And we gotta, we gotta kind of know that before we impact, I don't know exactly how large that department is, but the expertise, and it would have to be a phased approach in a union conversation as well, so.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, actually, I think that's extremely concerning, a piece of this is getting that sorted out right away, because then we have no money to actually pay the people who would be remaining in CHHS, that wouldn't be there. I mean, there are other grants. I mean, there are other grants that they go through that would not be captured by this, but for the ones that they did take. And if not, this loaning idea, I think actually would go into some legal trouble, because you have this piece of the charter that says that anything, you know, that you guys are approving, or any sort of money that they would have to handle, right, would have to come before council in the form of a special budget ordinance, which would require you guys to vote. And if they're trying to outsource that voting to a governing board, you wouldn't be able to have loaned employees, they'd have to be their employees that were doing it. The only other way to change that would be charter change, which would require a vote of the people, yeah.
I'm curious to know more about that, because my understanding is that we absolutely could loan employees, and so I'm, I'm, we'll, we'll need to explore that option more, because we're not quite to that conversation. That conversation doesn't happen if we, if this thing never exists, so.
And it's a legal question, it's a.
Correct.
A bargaining issue, there's a lot of.
Correct, yeah.
By that token, so could a private entity loan an employee as well? A Vista could loan an executive to this to help get it going, for example.
Yes, but it also becomes more expensive, and we could have a longer discussion about that, but the, the cost of paying them will become more burdensome and costly if it's this loaning piece of it.
And we haven't talked extensively about staffing of this new, because again, it doesn't, the staffing conversation is one that's further down the road, because if it doesn't exist, the staffing conversation doesn't really matter, yeah. And so it is a big conversation that we'll have to have, because again, it does affect bargaining units. I think it's roughly 20 employees for the city of Spokane?
It also is a huge morale thing.
Totally.
For folks not to know what's going on, I actually was at the homeless coalition meeting this, you know, this morning, sitting at the table with two employees from CHHS, and Gavin said that we've got all the employee situation figured out, and they kind of looked shocked, too, because, you know, so not knowing what's happening to your job, and, and, you know, there, there has been talk about the possibility of Genseres CDs and Daniel Ramos having left, partially because the uncertainty about their job with respect to the regional homeless authority. We would hate to lose anybody else, or have that be a factor.
Yes.
And can I just say one more thing, which is, I really want to echo the timeline issue, because if we can figure out some of the basic pieces of the governance structure especially, then collectively, all these jurisdictions could make an ask together to the state during the next legislative session, to either match some of the funds that we're all putting in, to stand up the authority, and with that in mind, we'll have to show them how we're going to be different from what happened in King County, and that should also be in our minds as we're talking about governance and the number of elected officials on the governing board.
Yeah, that's a great point. In fact, I'm not on the ledge team, but I think that should be something that's on our legislative agenda, is asking for dollars to help pilot this program, and in particular, as you said, to demonstrate how it can be done well, rather than what King County has done.
I agree, agree. Anything else?
On the note of kind of the way out or sunsetting, I was recently going deep dive into STA bylaws and stuff, and there is a way out even of STA, but it does require a vote of the PTBA to dissolve. So there should be some mechanism of dissolving, and it could be a high threshold or a threshold that could be automatic in four years. I think one year is probably too fast to get anything started, but some way, if it's not functioning, for a way for those dollars to be recaptured into a new idea.
Yes.
Do you know, is that PTBA, does the county have to put that on the ballot, then?
Since I just recently read it, the board can put it on the ballot, or voters could through 10% petition, so pretty high petition rate, too.
Interesting, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a high threshold.
Yeah. Definitely there will be a way for this to be dissolved. I guess my, my response was, people had been asking for like, after a year, we want to be able to get out, which.
Oh, you're talking, we're talking about two different things. You were talking about, say, one entity saying, I want out, versus the whole thing being.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, okay, got it. Anything else? Go ahead.
I just would encourage, I will be leaving, we have a few folks who will still be here. The clock is ticking.
Three or four.
And I, realistically, I look at other models that I have studied around the country, including Houston. To do this right, you're talking about at least a year. So I, we are putting a lot of pressure, and I've hoped the same, but I hope that folks are also thinking about a backup plan, if the regional plan takes more than six months, if it takes a year to really get up and running.
Yeah.